Okay, very good. So I'll call the meeting to order at must be right around seven. See, we don't have an alternate, we don't have any alternates here, so we've got a full full commission tonight, except for a couple. Are there any additions and or changes in the order of the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add one application, I'm just getting the number right now. I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash fifteen at one forty-six Route eighty-seven to replace a dock. And I would also like to make a change in removing application. I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero eight, the application of James Blair. To rebuild the lake wall at seven Webster Lane, the application has been dropped.
Isabelle, is that is the application still applied to the patio they wanted to put in?
No, my understanding right now is that it's been dropped altogether.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any communications or correspondence?
Yes, see, there's correspondence which I forwarded to the commission members. From resident Carol McLean regarding her concerns over the the property down the road from her as we previously discussed. Sixty-eight Route sixty-six East. And so those should be in the emails, see, there are, I believe, three emails. Along with some photo attachments and testimony from. Brandy Hollister at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which was also previously forwarded to the commission. At Ms. McLean's request.
Okay. I know I seen her letter, but I didn't see the others, unfortunately, so.
It should all have been in that one PDF, so there were the the emails and then the pictures. And the just copy of the statement made by Brandy Hollister in that one, in that first PDF.
I guess I missed that, I didn't go down far enough. Okay. Is there any audience of citizens that would like to speak? Okay. Uh, new business. I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash oh six, the administrative approval. Or an application for the town of Columbia Boathouse at Columbia Lake, and I know we were all down there to look at it. The other day and we had a site walk. You want to bring us up to date on that, Isabelle?
Yes, so we had a site walk last Thursday at the boathouse. But boathouse is being essentially replaced in kind on the existing footings, there's no additional. Grading or material that needs to be moved or removed within the lake bed. It'll be essentially the structure that was there before, which was taken down due to damage by a tree. It's fairly close to the lake, but requires no fill and no excavation at this point.
Okay. So did we approve what they're doing? I guess we did.
We, it wasn't approved at the site walk, it could be approved tonight by the commission or. The commission could vote that you feel it's appropriate for administrative approval. It's, I think, up to up to everyone at this point, because when it was brought to you, it was just a question of. Essentially. Where that that line is in terms of what commission members are comfortable with for administrative approvals versus full commission applications.
Well, do I hear a motion to make it a an administrative approval? I think that would be a good thing to have. Someone want to make that motion?
I think John did, and he's muted.
Okay.
If 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 we're looking at a motion, is that specific to this? Site or to the entire lake? Because typically on the lake, we want wetlands. Input and opinion, particularly from an L M A C point of view.
I. I don't know, what's what's everybody's opinion?
Well, my my opinion is this is a wetland commission decision. And this is the way we're looking at it.
Okay. So then we'll make a motion to approve the application then. Do I hear a motion of approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess it's unanimous, okay, very good. So move. Okay. Second item is I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash oh nine. The application of Jim Blair. Yeah, and Jim Blair Landscape and Design LLC to tear down and rebuild the existing. Lake wall at nine Webster Lane, Lane, nine Webster Lane. Do you want to bring us up to date on that, Isabelle?
Yes, so I'm actually in communication with Jim right now, he's having a little bit of trouble joining the meeting, so I'm just. Sending him that that information again, I'm not sure if it's. Technical issue or or what he's having a hard time with. I do think, let me see, we might have skipped over new business if everyone would be. Okay, going back to that, and I'll introduce one forty-six. Route eighty-seven while Jim tries to get on.
Okay. Yes, let's. Add then I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash fifteen, is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll talk about that first. We have an application?
Yes, we do, it was just submitted this Friday. And forwarded to the commission, I believe, today. See, I've been to the site, I met the owner there, I actually issued him an administrative approval recently, which I'll report on later. For nutrient allocation work associated with repair to an existing deck or replacement of an existing deck. And when I was out at the site, we started discussing the dock on the property, it's in very poor condition, there are some. Photos included with the application. It's structurally not sound, does not look safe to walk on, there are some really significant. Tracks in the the surface of the dock. And so he would like to remove it completely and essentially replace it with. Not quite the same thing, I believe he's moving to a wooden dock. Just looking to see where that information is in the application. So he has a demolition plan and a proposed plan for his dock. I think it would be beneficial for the commission to go out and and see this in a site walk.
If I if I may, Isabelle, L M A C would like to join you.
Absolutely.
In our construction guidelines, if this dock is grandfathered, and it looks like it is based on its size. Typically, we would not allow any changes to the dock. Unless they made it five by twenty, which is now the standard guideline. This is larger, I think it's twenty-eight by seven.
Okay, so there may be changes then in the plan to to comply with L M A C guidelines.
Well, Town of Columbia Construction Guidelines.
I'm familiar with the 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 dock, it's gonna be a lot of work to take it out.
Yes. It certainly is, it's a it's a lot of material to remove, but it's. Definitely work that's needed, when I spoke to the owner, he was discussing at one point with, I think he has friends or associates. That are, he isn't, he knows an engineer that he was talking to about potentially repairing it, and they recommended just full removal. Due to this current condition of the dock.
Okay, so we, do we have a motion to accept the application?
I'll make the motion to accept the application.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good, so we'll set up a site walk. Uh, let's see, this is October. What about the fourteenth on a Saturday at nine o'clock? Can everybody make that?
Possibly, I'm just coming back from the West Coast, I think I should be here by then.
Oh, wow, okay.
It's a red eye.
Hope you make it.
You may not want to see me.
All right, Saturday at nine AM, that's on the fourteenth. Good, okay. Can we get back to items on our old business, item seven point three? Uh, this is the application of Jim Blair. To tear down and rebuild the existing lake wall at nine Webster Lane, you want to fill us in again?
Yes, so we had the site walk, let's see. Earlier this month, there were at the time, three applications that we were looking at, which is now down to two. At seven Webster Lane, Jim will be using, or sorry, at nine Webster Lane, Jim will be using his fairly standard. Site conditions, gravel access driveway. Silt fence above. Disturbance, silt fence below as well as needed. Don't believe there's anything unusual about this this particular wall, I did send everybody copies of the L M A C. Application as well, which has just a slightly different drawing, which shows, I believe, the the tie offs. To ensure that the wall is going back in the same location.
Okay.
And Jim is is back here with us, so he can, I'm sure, speak to any questions, commission members.
Okay, he's on now. Okay, anybody have any questions for Jim? I guess he's gonna conform to the regu- the regular shoreline outline, right?
Yes, with this one, I think it was, there wasn't as much question, the.
Oh, yeah.
On the application that was. Dropped for our consideration.
Okay. So if there's no question, do we have a motion to approve the? Applicat- approve the. Wall, building the new wall.
And I have a summary ruling prepared for everyone as well.
Okay.
I do have a quick question, is there any particular reason why they dropped the third property?
Are you asking me, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, that's between me and the customer.
So just a refresh, so the the one that's being dropped is a Nason property?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I need to do.
Think her first name is Joyce.
Joyce, yep.
Okay.
Okay. So, do we have a? Recommendation to accept the? Project.
Motion to approve the summary that Isabelle's about to give.
Yes.
All right, I'll I'll share that with everyone.
Then I'll second.
Okay, so I'll just run through this really quickly, the application twenty-three, twenty-four dash oh nine for. Jim Blair at nine Webster Lane. Property of Phil DeZiato to tear down and rebuild the existing lake wall on Columbia Lake. The application is valid for two years unless extended by this agency and expires upon completion of the activity. Special consideration to be given to Columbia Lake, which is designated as a an area of special concern. Silt fences or hay bales shall be placed above the site to be disturbed to minimize stormwater runoff to the area, no heavy machinery on the lake bed. Stone and lumber can be stored on plywood placed on tarp on lake bed. Maintenance practices necessary to assure proper functioning of erosion and sediment controls. Routine monitoring and removal of sediment and repairs if necessary, controls will be monitored prior to forecasted rain events. And after forecasted rain events of three quarters of an inch or greater. Two triangulation points to be set opposed to the. Front of the existing wall to finalize the end wall points, these points are to represent the finished new wall. And will be set with stakes. All work shall be completed during lake drawdown, and the applicant, James Blair, is assigned. The responsibility for implementing the sediment and erosion control plan. Responsibility includes installation and maintenance of control measures. Informing all parties engaged in construction site of requirements and objectives of the plan. And notifying the Wetlands Commission Office of any transfer of responsibility.
Okay, so. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. And the next one is very similar, item seven point four, I W W C. Twenty-three, twenty-four dash ten, the application of Jim's Blair. Of Jim Blair Landscape and Design LLC to replace the existing lake wall. And construct a new permeable patio adjacent to the lake wall at eleven Webster Lane. Want to bring us up to date on that, Jim?
Sure, the, yeah, the block wall, I think, I don't know if everybody got a chance to see it, the blocks that are there, there's. Some failure that's going on, you know, can be attributed to. You know, poor concrete, the caps for sure, that's just a bad choice for their cap material, unfortunately, it's broken down. And the wall is kind of, it got pushed in a couple of places and settled in one pretty bad. So the best remedy is to kind of take it out and start over again. So we will take that out. And put in the base that we usually do. Which is, you know, anywhere from nine to twelve inches, depending on the depth of water. With stabilization mat underneath and. Start over with a sound block that are guaranteed from the manufacturer to be. Used in this particular situation and also installed in the manufacturer's specifications so that. Uh, we, he's not dealing with improper settling or movement of the wall in the future. And the patio above. Or immediately adjacent behind, I should say, really, is gonna be a permeable paver. That will be static or level, if you will, so that the groundwater or whatever can make it onto that patio will go. Through the stone base, which will be, you know, we say a minimum of twelve, but in this particular instance, it'll probably be more because the. The wall. Is so high above the water there, and I think what's gonna happen is I'm gonna go down. About a foot. So the current wall is gonna actually drop in elevation. And even with that, we still have a good way to infiltrate that patio water. In in behind that lake wall, so that. You know, so we're not adding to the load of the site. And everything's kind of the same, the way we approached it, Isabelle mentioned that on the last job. We build a gravel road that comes around from the driveway, it's really the only way to get back there with any type of machinery or trucks. And all that stays in place. Throughout the season, protecting the abutting property with a silt fence, so that he's not getting. Gravel or washouts onto his property and. Everything will be tarped and covered during events and. Silt fence will be in place throughout, so. Pretty much the same procedure, and I, if I'm missing anything, please let me know.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Jim? If not, do we have a summary ruling, Isabelle?
Yes.
Could you read it? Thank you.
Pulling it up now. Sorry, just one second, I have too many things on my desktop. Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
The right one. Okay, let me see, I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash one zero, the application of Jim Blair for. Let me see, Janice Zarnowski, trustee, application, the duration of this permit is for two years. Generally, the the same conditions as were in the previous summary ruling. Special consideration to be given to Columbia Lake, silt fence or hay bales shall be placed above the site to minimize stormwater runoff, no heavy machinery on the lake bed. Stone and lumber can be stored on plywood and placed on the lake bed. Only additional condition I've placed here. Is the site is to be inspected by annually during lake drawdown for the permeable. Pavers, a letter certifying that the permeable patio is correctly functioning and has been maintained as necessary shall be sent to the Columbia Inland Wetlands. And Watercourses Commission after each inspection. Inspections may be decreased in frequency only with the approval from the Wetlands Commission, Wetlands Agent or Commission. And a copy of these conditions is to be recorded on the land records with the town clerk. Maintenance practices necessary to assure proper functioning of erosion and sediment controls. Routine monitoring and removal of sediment and repairs if necessary. Controls to be monitored prior to forecasted rain events and after forecasted rain events of three quarters of an inch or greater. Two triangulation points to be set opposed to the front of the existing wall to finalize the end wall points. These points are to represent the finished new wall and to be set with stakes. All work shall be completed during the lake drawdown and the applicant, James Blair, is assigned the responsibility for implementing this sediment and erosion control plan.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the summary ruling?
I'll move that we accept that motion.
Okay, Ron made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
So move, looks like unanimous decision. Very good, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for coming.
Yes, sir.
Uh, next item is the approval of meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes of September seventh, first of all. Someone want to make a motion to approve them? I've seen one word on there that I didn't understand, but that's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
What's that word?
I don't really, I I can't remember it now, but it seemed like a word I never heard of before.
Such, S C I C H E.
Oh, is that, what does that mean?
That is something that our former lake consultant, Dr. Robert Corkman, has said about this particular lake. That we are, he's calls it a bathtub, I call it a swimming pool. If we're not careful and we continue to build bathtub walls, we can get a wave reaction that oscillates and goes between. Let's say woodland terrace and Route eighty-seven and can create a lot of destruction, we actually had one. During a storm about three years ago that did sink a boat.
Wow.
Terrace.
Never heard of that one. Okay, very good, thank you, so we've got a motion, second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, so move. That was the meeting minutes, how about the site walk minutes? On September sixteenth, someone want to make a motion to approve them? Okay, thank you, David, second?
I'll second.
Ron made the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, so move. Audience of citizens, we have none here tonight. Commission open discussion. Do we want anybody have anything to discuss? Well, okay, if not, we will go into our administrative reports.
Excuse me, one quick question, Isabelle, all these emails that are coming from this young woman or whoever, this woman on Route sixty-six. Are we supposed to read them and have action on them, or we just, it's an FYI?
So it's really, it's an FYI, the emails are emails that were. Resident requested they be shared with the commission, so they're really a matter of correspondence. There's no action that that I see for the commission to take at this stage in regard to the complaints. The site has been investigated, I gave a report.
Couple months ago.
A couple months ago, yes, I've received no additional complaints of new activity or no, no. New information essentially, so I I think it's just an ongoing. Issue in that area with, you know, we've had a lot of rain, I think there's been significant. Build up of of storm water, which is a point of frustration for the residents in that area, but I don't see any. Indication of a violation or regulated activity occurring.
And is the buildup of water in a wetlands area, which in essence is what happens in a wetlands area.
Yes, and we we talked about that a little bit as well when I provided that report, that area is adjacent to the Ten Mile River. It is low lying, I think it's it's historically been a wetland, and I believe it's. Wetter now than it really ever has been before, just due to the amount of rain that we're getting and the stormwater runoff from the topography of the area.
Okay, because she keeps making comparisons to Columbia Lake, and if this happened on Columbia Lake, and I see no, it's an apple to oranges comparison, we're a water body. And we obviously have lots of wetlands around our watershed. And you know what, they empty into the lake, that was confusing to me.
Yeah, I I think it's, I think the issue taken is with something that is part of the natural character of the land, that's my understanding of the situation currently.
Thank you, okay.
I I think it's more the weather than anything else, my rain gauge said five inches and I tried to.
Did it really?
My lawn, yeah, I, well, this is over the week, but still, I tried to cut my grass today and I still was sinking in the mud.
Yep, so are we.
So it, yeah, I'm sure everybody had that same problem, so, you know, it's got got to be a problem, that's all. Got to be a problem, that's all. When the rain stops, then we won't have the problem.
Yes.
Okay.
Keep, keep the sunny days coming.
Yes, that's what we do.
Yeah, I took a drive by there and I can't imagine what she's, she's talking about. I mean, although it seems like she's going to an awful lot of effort to get our attention, so that concerns me a little bit.
Yeah, it's, uh, she is persistent, but I have not. Received any, like I said, new information or additional complaints or, uh, additional correspondence from any other residents in the area.
Okay. Okay, so you want to give us the administrative reports, Isabel?
Sure, so I issued four administrative reports. Uh, one I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash eleven to Nadia Wright of Giuliano's Pools. For construction of a twenty-three by thirty-four in-ground pool and four-foot safety fence at. Twelve Sunrise Drive. It is roughly sixty-three feet from the wetlands. Uh, so in the upland review area, but not to the extent where I felt it would have any impact on the wetlands. Um, twenty-three, twenty-four dash twelve. To Keith Trossel to replace an existing shed and existing bedding with gravel. And an eight-inch cement pad at twenty-seven Johnson Road. There are some. Wetlands in the area, there's a small pond, uh, that actually they utilize for their, their ducks and, and chickens and livestock there. And the shed, I believe they also. House animals in, it's existing that they would like to rebuild it and have something that's in better condition. Uh, again, I had no concern for the wetlands. Administrative approval, I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash one-three. To Matt Grabber of Grabber Construction to install a trench drain and. Bury existing gutter drains and replace existing field stall, field stone wall and concrete walkways. At twenty-two B Lake Road, uh, the walkways and patio that have been replaced are all existing. Um. Minimal excavation will occur and the site is, is fairly well-contained. Uh, there is currently some erosion occurring from the roof drains, and so I think that the new plan to. Rearrange the drainage on the site will be a, a significant improvement. And then finally, twenty-three, twenty-four dash one-four administrative approval to Chris Want. To replace an existing deck at one forty-six Route eighty-seven. This is actually the site that we will be seeing when we go to the sidewalk to look at the dock that's being replaced. The deck itself is being replaced in kind, but they will be putting an impermeable membrane within it. So that they can utilize the space underneath without having it constantly be wet. Uh, and to offset that, they're doing some work within the nutrient allocation plan, so they'll be. Digging below the dock just to install gravel and infiltrating that, and they'll also be infiltrating. Uh, a portion of the roof, which will be a really significant improvement for the, the runoff from the site going to Columbia Lake.
Okay, very good. Uh, where, where is, uh, one forty-six Route eighty-seven?
Yes, right on Route eighty-seven, uh, pretty close to. Town Hall, I might actually have it up on fraud.
For anyone that's not familiar with it, it's right on that little. R- road, the driveway that connects on both ends to the eighty-seven that used to be part of the old highway.
Yeah, this one right here, and then if I. Can zoom out a little bit. Well, sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't. There we go.
Oh, okay.
So right at this section of Columbia Lake here.
One forty-six.
Was recently sold.
Yes, yeah, they just very recently purchased the property.
Okay, okay. So it's going towards Route six on the left-hand side.
Yes.
Well, that's Whitney Road, isn't it? It's on the other road.
No, the, the road I'm speaking about is, you can barely see it underneath the trees. It's, it's almost like a common driveway. And it used to be part of the old Route eighty-seven.
Gotcha, no, I, I just meant for a point of reference.
Yeah, Whitney Road is probably another quarter of a mile to your left.
To the left, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, got it.
Okay, very good.
Alright.
Very good, thank you. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Ron?
Oh, sure.
He waved his hand first, Ron. You want to second it? Okay. John seconds it. All in favor, raise your hand.
We're here.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, John.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Yep, good night.
Good night.